Well. Hey. You ready, Roger? Gina, you ready?
Beer board meeting called to order. Roll call.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamen.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Farah. Mayor Burton.
Here. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under new business, we have a request from... Got to hold it out a little bit. Request from Nemat Inc., DBA Irons Market number sixty-two for a Class B off-premise beer permit located at twenty-four twelve North Charles Seaver's Boulevard in Clinton, Tennessee, from applicant Hamida Boghanyi. Is that close? That's pretty close. Address is seven oh eight Melford Lane in Knoxville, Tennessee. Do you mind approaching the podium and just kind of stage?
Sure. Hamida is my wife. It's Kareem and Hamida Boghanyi. Kareem Boghanyi is me.
Now who, so who filled out the application?
Yes.
I did.
Okay, so they both did. So are you, are you changing the management of the?
No, we are leasing that store from Rocky Top.
So you're leasing it?
Yes.
Okay. How long have you worked there before?
I've never worked there.
Have you ever worked in a store?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's my sixty-second store.
Sixty-second?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's pretty, pretty good.
Yeah, but I don't operate all of them, but yeah.
So what processes have you used in the past as far as checking IDs and, and all that when people are purchasing alcohol?
Depends, like, most of the time we have, the registers nowadays are capable to where, you know, without checking an ID, the transaction doesn't move any forward.
Is that how these registers are there?
And honestly, I've not been in the stores, so I don't know. But usually, you know, different counties call for different classes. So in Knox County, we send them to task classes and stuff like that. So, you know, we usually send our employees to a class to where they are trained again and we reiterate, you know, that selling beer to minors is not allowed.
Okay. Von, do we, or Bill, do we have some, we have some material for individual store owners that, that purchase or there's, that, that selling? You got the packet and you give him that packet to him? Okay. If you have any questions, please contact.
No, I, yeah, she, she talked to me earlier before the meeting.
Good, good. Well, one thing I always say is we take this very seriously, the council and, and city in general. We do things on, on, on a periodic basis and we don't give first-time forgiveness. We're going to hit you as hard as we can from a, from a monetary standpoint. So we just want to make sure that you know that we're serious about do not sell to underage kids. And we, you know, we're assuming you're going to do the right thing from the get-go and we hope you do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try our best, you know. In nineteen years of my C-store career, we just got caught once, so.
Okay.
But, you know, I've got a son who's fifteen.
When you say you got caught, it's almost like we've been doing this the whole time. We just got caught one time.
We did that once, sorry. Didn't come out right.
All right, just wanted to clarify that. Do we have any questions? You tell you guys have any questions?
I'm good.
Okay.
It's raining outside.
Yes, yes. So do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir. Hear a motion to adjourn the beer board meeting?
So moved.
Beer board meeting's adjourned. Regular public hearing called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamen.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Farah.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. So I guess we need, this is the public hearing, right? So the public hearing is on ordinance number six forty-two. This is for the approval or a public hearing, any feedback for the fiscal year budget of two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Would anybody like to speak on that? Motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Public hearing's adjourned. Regular meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrell.
Here.
Councilman Stamen.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker. Councilman Farah.
Here.
Mayor Burton.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The prayer this evening will be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Before our prayer, I would like to have a moment of silence in memory of a friend of ours, Mr. Dow Burton, who passed away a little over a week ago. Father God, I thank you for this evening and I thank you for the privilege and the ability to serve you and the citizens of Clinton and this city. Father, I thank you for Mr. Dow and I thank you for the life he lived and for the example he was. And Father, I just pray right now that you be with Ms. Peggy and the kids as they go through this time of grief. I pray that you would shower them with your grace and your love and your mercy. Father, thank you for all the things you do for us and so many times we're so negligent to acknowledge them and I acknowledge you as who you are tonight. I ask that you be with us as we talk about the business of the city, particularly as we talk about the budget. I pray that we would be good stewards of your money and those of the citizens. Bless this time in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. Do I hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we'll recognize any visitor or citizens with any grievances or praises. Yes, ma'am? When you approach the podium, just state your name and address.
I'm Angela Galen. I reside in Oak Ridge, but I have owned property at three oh five Market Street in Clinton. I am here representing the merchants at Market and Main Street. We were concerned with something that came across council meeting last month and about billboards, about possibly not continuing the, the billboards on the highway. And so we put a letter together and mailed it to each of the city councilmen this past week, giving you a little bit of the history of it, reminding you where they're located and what they look like. Because I think sometimes we pass things every day, we don't always see them. And we wanted to just mention to you the value we have in those, not just for the merchants in retail down on Market Street, but also for all the merchants. When people come off the highway and come down into Clinton, they pass down Charles Seaver's Boulevard and pass through all the retail businesses there. And we just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that and ask you to continue with the billboards. Did you all receive the letters that we sent? And you were all able to see it? Did anybody have any questions about anything that we had in there?
Well, I'll, I'll ask you a question.
Sure.
The, we had looked at that and Roger did a good job doing some background and coming up with this possible solution. The, and Roger, you may want to talk a little bit about this, but I know one, we're talking about maybe... First of all, I want to say I want to support you guys, because and I'll share my, my beliefs in later on. But one of the billboards is, is much, much more expensive than the other two. And our thought was maybe take that one, just going from three to two, you'll still have one going both ways. But we're really saving about a thousand dollars, I believe, a month on that one billboard. So I'll let Roger talk a little bit more about that.
Mayor, I did, we looked at it, looked at a couple things. We did one option of going a more generic tap board shops they play downtown Clinton. It was, it was kind of generic and really, we didn't like that.
Beyond?
Yeah, okay. So that was one option to, to go to a generic one. Couple, couple issues with that that we discussed staff was that it wouldn't be fair to ask one, one select group of merchants to pay twenty-five percent of it if it's representing all of down, all of the city. So it would take our cost up to a little over twenty thousand dollars. Right now, I think we pay around fifteen, fourteen and fifteen thousand. I rode the interstate a couple of times looking at the locations, I met with our Lamar advertising exec several times. We have one coming southbound right before the one twenty-nine exit, the Rocky Top exit. And we have another one about a mile before the one twenty-two, the Clinton exit. We also have a Green McAdoo one in between the one, the two one twenty-nine exits. So actually, southbound, there's three billboards representing something in the city of Clinton. And then we have one northbound that's located at the Raccoon Valley exit. The cost of these billboards, the one at Rocky Top, the first one is thirty-five hundred and seventy dollars. The second one, southbound right before the Clinton exit, is ten thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars. And the one at Raccoon Valley is six, six thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. So one thought, one, one, I guess recommendation would be that if, if we wanted to possibly save some money is to cut out the ten thousand dollar one, which I think the one at Rocky Top is, is better anyway, coming southbound. That would still give us historic downtown, a Green McAdoo coming southbound, and a historic downtown going northbound. And that would take our price, the city's price would drop to seven thousand six forty-one and the merchants two thousand five forty-seven. So it would drop theirs almost in half.
It's my understanding when these billboards came in, it was a package deal. And even though they have them separated in prices, my understanding, because we looked at getting an additional billboard a few years back ourselves with the merchants. And the prices have rose so much that I'm concerned if you remove just one of those, you may still be paying the same amount of money, but you will have lost one. You have spoken with Lamar and they've already told you that.
She clarified it in an email that if we, whichever one we dropped, the time that we would, the, the cost would go down.
Okay. Something else, and, and I have been supporting these as many people here has been supporting them since it started in two thousand and three. We've talked to thousands of people that have come off the highways with those. And I personally have asked them, what was it on the billboards that attracted you to come here? And there are three big things that attract them. Historic, having that word on there, antique shopping, and food, dining or food. Those are the things that are going to draw people and pull them off the highway. Green McAdoo is wonderful and I think it's a great thing to have a billboard with it. But if you're going to take down one of the billboards that tell people that it's historic, there's antique shopping and there's food here, that, you know, the keeping Green McAdoo may not be the one you want to keep up. That's my only suggestion.
Let me interject here. The city is not paying for Green McAdoo.
Okay.
That is coming out of the Green McAdoo budget, which is funded by the state.
Okay.
The city has no funding of that.
All right, okay. But you were saying that that's one that's sending you here to, to Clinton also. That may not be one that pushes people off the highway to come to Clinton. But those are just things that we've talked with customers and that they've said that's their reasons for coming off. So, that's, I guess that's all I want to say, how important we feel it is, not just to the retail in downtown, but also to retail throughout the city and to the revenue, to the tax revenue, the sales tax and all. So.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
ET, do you have something?
Yeah, could I, before you sit down? Could I ask you, money raising's a tough thing and I know everything there is to know about that part of it. When you go around and Mr. Hanks goes around and raises money, does everyone pretty much pitch in what they should be? Or not everyone?
There have been many consistently that have been donating money since this started in two thousand and three. And there's always a fluctuation because there are some businesses that come in and some businesses that disappear. A few may have stopped for a bit and then they've come back in. But we've been able to raise our twenty-five percent consistently for the, the last sixteen years.
Does any of the money, when you have a festival, is any of the money for the people that set up? Maybe a little bit of that setup fee could go to that? Or does it now?
Well, we only do one festival, the Spring Fair. The fall one is done by the Chamber. The Chamber has, I believe this last time, I think they were on the list of having contributed something. I think this may have been their first time to contribute towards the billboards. And individually, the Antique Merchants Guild has done the Spring Fair and it has at some times donated towards the, the funds.
Well, any opportunities you would have would be welcome. I just, I just remember growing up here when it was, every store was full in the fifties and sixties and I remember days when nothing was there. But I really appreciate what you guys have done to it. Friday night was outstanding crowd and it's pretty much a testament of what you guys have done. But raising money, I know, is a tough thing every year.
True. Well, we work hard and I think that we have done a great job in bringing people to Clinton with the festivals. And we've had people coming from other states that have come to us and asked us how we even run these festivals. Because they've heard that the festival in Clinton is one of the best ones in the area. So they've come up from Alabama asking us how to do this. So we're doing something right and, and we're getting noticed by it.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
You know, one thing I'd like for the, the antiquers out there to think about, because we're going to bring up this up to a vote, probably in your, in your part. And, you know, you know where I, I hope people know where I stand, I've been very verbal about it. But what y'all think about is it makes sense from just raising that, going from five thousand to twenty-five hundred on your own's part, it's going to be much easier to do that. And I think what we've seen the last couple of years, which I think is a good thing, is there's been more diversification on Market Street, especially over the last year or two. And, and I know people are probably maybe more reluctant to give money if they're not considered, you know, an antique store. But, but I like to, maybe when we bring this up, you know, when it, when it comes time, just a show of hands, just, you know, what you all support. If you, you want all three, if you want all, or two. And I'd just like to see that, just to make sure that we're making the right decision, who, for those people that are going to support that.
Well, diversification is wonderful. I don't think any of us complain about that. We definitely, what we definitely want to see is, as I say, historic and food on there, antique and specialty shopping.
That, that has nothing, that has nothing to, that wasn't my point I was trying to make. My point was, is just, just the, it'd be easier to raise that, that twenty-five versus the five and if that's going to be a difference maker for you guys. And I just want to get everybody's input and just see what they thought about it.
True. I think the most expensive billboard is the one that's right at exit one twenty-two, isn't it? And that's the one that, right at the Clinton exit. Yeah. And that's the one I think that's the most important and that's the one you're looking at taking away.
Okay.
That, that's, I think, just a concern.
Well, that's something to think about. Thank you. Don, you want to come up and say something? You're not really wearing green, by the way. It's more of a blue.
My name's Don Raines. I live in Knoxville also. I have a store at three fifty-five Market Street. You know, I'm, I'm kind of surprised at the prices that Roger got on the billboards. Because like Angela said, we checked a few years ago on billboards and we were told by Lamar, this was probably four years ago, that the billboard at one twenty-two, if we were paying for the one beside it, would be eighteen thousand dollars a year. So I'm sure Lamar would love for that one to be given up. You know, I think you said ten thousand. Well, you know, maybe we're getting a package deal or a city deal. But that was, several of us, Jerry and some of us, we got quotes a few years ago on billboards.
Well, I think, I think when we did that, Roger, and we did the Green McAdoo, that, that we got some type of special pricing. I don't know what it was called, but we, we got a, a pretty good price on all of those. But as you stated, if we go down to two, they have agreed that that's going to be the price.
Right.
Correct?
Now, here's her email. Yes, if you drop that one, you will free ten thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Right. But, you know, like I said, four, three or four years ago, we were quoted eighteen thousand dollars for the one beside it.
Oh, I bet, I bet it's still that much.
Because that's the crime exit.
I'd say that market has changed somewhat. Because now you've got social media and you've got people search things on their phones. So I mean, advertising is a volatile industry from what I understand.
Right.
So I mean, I, you checked it, so I mean, that's got to be, you got the email, so that's got to be what it is.
Well, you're not going to be able to get on your phone much longer, so billboards may come back in.
Well, but your passenger can.
When, when was it contracted to get what we claim, I guess, a good deal on the ten thousand dollar one? When was that contracted?
I don't, it's, I'm not sure when it started.
Eight years, ten years?
No, at least ten years ago, but I'm not sure exactly.
What I'm, what I'm afraid of is if we think that's a high number or a low number and we do away with it, let's say for four or five years, and all of a sudden, guys, we need to put one back up, I think the prices are going, we're really going to see the value of one of those billboards then. So I'm not, I'm not sure I approve doing away with any of them at this point in time.
Yes, ma'am? Jerry, you're next.
Hi, I'm Roberta Kating. My husband and I own the buildings at three fifty Market and the other two, and we reside in Knoxville. But I worked with Roger a couple of years ago with this billboard. And there was one that came up coming north, because that one that's coming north is in sort of an odd place.
It's a left-hand reading.
But if you replace that one, there was a billboard space that came up and I don't know if it was one that the museum had or that was closer to Clinton. And it was over twelve thousand a year for that one billboard. And we just couldn't, we can raise the funds as we see it now, but we, that's our lifeline on the interstate. I mean, some of these, yes, social media, we do get people with that. But, and especially on our market night, but for your traveler, they're looking at these billboards. And what that billboard said is Clinton. That's primarily what it says on that billboard. And I, I don't understand, is Green McAdoo not a state facility now?
And, and that billboard is paid by the state.
Then why would we incorporate it into Clinton?
I think I was just trying to show that we got three right now coming southbound that tells you to get off the one twenty-two and visit Clinton.
Well, I know, but that one that is right at one twenty-two does attract, you get them from coming south with that first one.
I think the point was to say that there were four total signs driving traffic to Clinton, one of which the state provides, three of which we're talking about here. I think that's why he was, if I'm not mistaken, it's the way I understood it.
Oh, okay. But those two coming south are very important because you see the one and then you see it right there at the, at the turnoff. And our customers that come in every day from out of state, we ask them how they found us and they would say it's the billboards. And it's a little hit out of our pocket, but hey, it's cheap advertising. If you take it over the year for each, what we ask the stores to contribute, that is really inexpensive advertising.
Thank you. Jerry?
Hello, guys. My name's Jerry Ellenberg. I reside in Oak Ridge, but I have owned and operated a business at three twenty North Main Street now for eighteen years. Now, I was on the ground floor when these billboards came about in the beginning. That's been sixteen years ago. And at the time, it was brought about as a partnership, a partnership between the city and the merchants. And as far as I know, we have never not come up with our portion of this billboard payment. Now, if you look at these people back here, a lot of them like me don't live in Clinton, live in Oak Ridge, so they live in Knoxville, they live in other places. But we all have businesses here. We come here, when we come here, we spend our tax dollars here also, just like everybody else does. But we are all entrepreneurs. We do not have corporate funding. So what you're seeing here are people that have a heart for this, that want to do it. And I think that a fifteen thousand dollar partnership with the city is just a minimum of what the city could help us do in downtown. We have maintained businesses in that town, in downtown for years. When I first came here, there were a lot of empty storefronts, paper in the windows. Now, I know everybody don't like antiques and the antiques are not for everybody. But that is what has sustained Clinton, especially the downtown area, through the recession and up to now. And we've all worked very hard at it and we would really appreciate your support on these billboards. And to answer to your question, ET, about can we take part of those funds to go to the billboards? Actually, right now, I don't know if you've noticed them or not, but we have a spot on the attraction signs. Coming southbound, going northbound. And we've had those probably for sixteen or seventeen years. And those signs are all funded by the merchants. We have no help with funding in that whatsoever. So that's where part of our funds go to. We do do that. Any questions? I'm too, if you don't have any questions for me.
Thank you, Jerry. You want else? Yes, sir.
My name is Charlie Lyons. I'm from Clinton, always been from Clinton. The billboards really bother me. I drove up and down today and looked at them very well, actually took some pictures on my phone. The one northbound, I took a picture of it and I picked the very best spot that I could see the whole board. And it was a good recognizable picture. And I pulled up about fifty yards or so, I couldn't tell you exact. And then I couldn't see the billboard at all. And it was the same way back the other way. If you're driving sixty-five mile an hour, which most of those people on the interstate are not, they're better than that. My calculation says they got four seconds to see that board. It's, the trees are really green and really covered up. And I think that's something that we need to work with the company and see if we can open that up a little bit. Now, the one going, the close one going south, it's about a fourth of the way covered with vegetation. And I couldn't get a good picture of it anywhere along the interstate. And that, that bothers me that we can't, it's kind of like putting a men's room sign on the inside and you don't know who you're going to get in there. But we, we need to work with that because we're paying a lot for something we're not getting. I, I also went to every merchant that was open today and spoke with them. And every one of them said they got a lot of out-of-state people in to visit their shops. And a couple of them sinuated, out-of-state people do more buying than the people that are local because they're looking for antiques. They wouldn't exit the interstate and come down and just look around and do nothing. And it bothers me that, uh, that when, you know, the sign says downtown Clinton. But once they exit that interstate, they're, uh, they're passing a lot of merchants there. They usually gotta eat, they gotta buy gas. When you exit interstate, if you don't gas up, you're in trouble. So, and, and even sometimes I think you might get a headache and need a drugstore. But, you know, there's a lot of businesses down through there that, that, uh, use those signs as well as, uh, these antiquers. Now, I don't, I don't have any business antique shops. I've got seven rentals on Market Street. And I don't, we don't want Market Street to die, and you don't either. Because, uh, I'd hate for it to look like Lake City and, uh, our friends up there. We have to try to change our name to get a, some merchants in.
Do we still have that five-second delay? Bleep, bleep that off.
I said our friends in Lake City. But, uh, I, I think you all will do the right thing. We need to keep those signs, and these people are doing a great job.
Thank you, Charlie. We miss you. Seat opening right here now. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address, please.
Dana Worthington, four thirty eighty, Monroeville, come here?
Yes.
Well, I wanted to say thank you to everybody because I've lived here for thirty-seven years, and I wouldn't be able to live or buy groceries without you all. Thank you. I wanna thank Clinton. I love Clinton. I love my shop. I propose that we all participate equally, and I'm willing to do it to write a check. If we're gonna have something, let's all pay for it. Let's work at, I'm, I'm not an antique dealer, but I sure have bought tons of stuff from all these people. So, um, I think that might be a suggestion for people here. Some do pay, some don't. I know you mentioned that. I think that's what you, the things you were talking about. But, um, I love Clinton. I have a great business here. I think it's a great town. We need to support our antique shops. These people work like dogs. I see them running around the street all day long. They clean, they organize, they make things pretty. We have a beautiful street to walk on. Let's keep it clean. I don't like the sidewalk where the water condensation drips down from the hammer spilling. Are you allowed to do that? I don't like that, okay? I don't like that personally because my dog has to lick it, and I don't like that. So, that's really my only complaint, except for people driving to pass on Eagle Bay. But let's support the antique shops, and I think we should maybe put it in the paper, what businesses would like to support downtown more. I do buy a lot of stuff down there. Let's encourage it. Find some ways to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, communications for the mayor. I, I do have a couple of board and committee appointments. Um, wasn't able to do that. I was, been kinda busy last couple of weeks with my, my father passing. Um, but I would like to pick that up and do that next week. Um, what I was thinking about doing before everything happened was to, um, get more input from the council with some of these appointments and, and make sure y'all feel comfortable that we're going in the right direction as a council and, and we're having the proper representation on some of these more important boards. So, um, I'm gonna have Roger, if he, if he doesn't mind, to follow up with you guys and just kinda see with some of these appointments that we have, if you feel comfortable going in the same direction we've been going, or you wanna do something different, okay? Under committee reports, um, city school report, Miss Johnson?
I think there's somebody who wanted to go, Scott. Um, Scott, I don't think we were finished with the speaking.
Well, I, I'd asked, but if you come to the podium, that's fine. We're not real strict on anything. Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Emily Lawson, and I reside at one fifteen Westwood Drive in Westwood Estates. Um, I am concerned, and I know you all have, uh, done, uh, the, the big trucks and the going, the speed limit down through there. It concerns me. I know there's younger families with kids, and I don't have children, um, but I sit on the front porch with my dogs, and the, um, speeding is very, it's, it concerns me a great deal. And I, I know y'all have put the speed limit sign up, and before that, you all put, had the, um, thing that flashed it, but it's getting worse. So, I don't know if there's something we can do or something you all can think about. Um, I don't know. I just.
Von, would you like to, to add anything on that, or what?
Yes. I mean, sorry.
We've had several complaints from citizens of Westwood and that area, and it is forty-five coming to the city. It's hard to do forty-five through there. So, uh, what I'm doing is putting some data together. The, uh, speed trailer that you see sitting there is actually collecting data. So, it's getting the vehicle count, um, average speed, high speeds. Um, also, I've collected the data from traffic accidents in that area from the head start to city limits, and so I'm looking at that.
Were, were you talking more about twenty-five W? Were you talking about inside the subdivision?
No, I'm talking about inside the subdivision, right when you come up to here. No, that's fine. Um, it just, you know, I mean, I was young and, and drove fast once also. It's just, it's getting worse, I think. And, um, I'm not the only one who thinks that, that lives over there. So, I didn't know what the next step would be.
One thing Chief said, both, both the flash one and the trailer, we'll collect the data.
Yeah.
And we can go back and pull it, and then that way Chief looks at there a certain time of day that we're having more speeding than not, and then we can, we can have an officer start hanging out at that time more often.
Okay.
And writing a few tickets, and then usually that gets, gets everybody's attention. So, that's, and I don't know if we have one up there right now or not.
Uh, no, not up there right now.
We kinda move them around town. We got different locations, poles that we can put them on, but we can, we can.
I've seen it up there before, so you all have.
Yeah, we can get one back up there.
I, I was born and raised up there, and, um, and I, I have a house real close to you, by the way. But anyway, I think the mentality is, and I follow into this, you go up there, you see that big hill coming. It's like you gotta get a little faster. You, 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 I'm just silly to think that, but I think, especially as you get a little bit older like, like I am, I'll tell you. You feel like coming, you gotta, you gotta kinda gas a little bit more coming up. That's not an excuse for people to speak, but I think sometimes people think that, about that without really thinking about it.
Yeah.
But, um, um, Von will get on that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? One once, one twice? Um, Kelly?
Well, I will be short and sweet tonight because I'm soaking wet. I've never seen it rain so hard, and I promise I had an umbrella, but there is not one dry spot on my body right now. So, I'll be short and sweet. Um, a couple of updates regarding Clinton City Schools. Um, we have had a very busy summer. School obviously is let out for the summer, but we have not slowed down in any capacity. Just to update you on some of the student activities that we have had going on since school let out. We took forty-eight of our fifth grade safety patrol students to Washington, D.C. for four days, and they got to do a plethora of wonderful things, including, um, a tour of the White House. And so, that was probably one of the best trips we've, we've ever taken, just a great group of chaperones, a great group of children, and they had a great time. We also, um, did in collaboration with O.R.A.U., a STEAM camp for students at North Clinton Elementary School that was open to all students in Clinton City Schools. And STEAM is STEM with the A as arts, and so it also incorporated arts into that. Um, Oak Ridge planned that camp for us in conjunction with a state grant that we received, and fifty of our students attended that week. And then the following week, we had seventy students that attended our Junior Achievement Biztown Camp, and so that was a four-day camp that we provide, and we pay Junior Achievement to do that so our kids can have that opportunity to participate in that camp for free. And the STEAM camp was also free to students. And then the following week, we had over two hundred community students participate in the Exceptional Art Camp that was held at Clinton Elementary School, and that was run by, uh, Ms. Allison Swanner, who was the art teacher at Clinton Elementary. And so, we've had a lot of different opportunities for students to stay involved over the course of the summer. So, we're super proud to be able to offer those opportunities for our students. And then summer lunches are continuing. I want everyone to know at North Clinton Elementary School from eleven o'clock to twelve-thirty, Monday through Friday, and those lunches are free to any Clinton City kid, any Anderson County kid, any, any, any kid, because it's a federally funded program, can come ages zero to eighteen and eat a free lunch every weekday at North Clinton Elementary School from eleven to twelve-thirty. So, we encourage all people to take part in, in that offering that we have at North Clinton.
Does that always happen?
Yes, this is our third summer that we've done it. Yes, yes. And we provide all the lunches to the community center kids, and we were able to provide lunches to all of the students who are participating in our summer camps as well. I'd, well, obviously, when we're running the camps, it's a little higher, but it fluctuates anywhere from thirty kids to a hundred kids every day. It just, it just depends on, it depends on the day of the week and what is being served if that appeals to the masses. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly?
Yes, Miss Johnson. In your second year, biggest accomplishment, accomplishment this year?
Well, it's my third year, but thank you for noticing.
It seemed like two years.
I'm just checking here.
Biggest accomplishment? I think just continuing the tradition of excellence that Clinton City Schools has always had. You know, we've, we've served our students very well. Our test scores remain very high. We remain very competitive. We are among one of the high school systems in the state, and that's something to be proud of, and that's not a sign of me. That's a sign of our hard-working teachers that show up every day and do a great job on behalf of kids. It's just a good place to be.
And what's the first day back for teachers?
First day back for teachers is July twenty-eighth, which is crazy, but, yeah, it gets earlier every year.
They're really glad you asked that question.
How's the attendance looking thus far?
It's a little early to tell with attendance, but, uh, we dropped a little bit this past year, and you're always gonna fluctuate, you know, up and down. But it appears as if we, at this point, we look like we will be, um, higher this, this upcoming year than we were last year. Where we're seeing a big uptick is in sixth grade. Um, right now, we, we have kept significantly more sixth graders this year than, than last year.
A lot of that has to do with offering the sports.
I think it does. I think the Blaise well-rounded activities have done a lot for us, and we have just a rock star sixth-grade team. You know, we ranked second in the state with our sixth-grade scores last year, and so I think just our, we're, we got a strong academic and well-rounded program.
Great.
Any other questions?
Update on the pond, I guess, with J.B. Is all the plants been purchased and installed?
They discovered that they didn't quite, I think we needed more plants in there, J.B., and, and Ms. Odell went and collaborated with J.B.
I talked to her the other day, but we, probably the amount of water that we've got, we need more plants, so we continue. We, we did some the other day, but we're gonna do some more. It is making a difference. It's just a matter of getting enough plants in there to do the whole job.
When they did the prototype in the classroom, obviously, that was very small, but there was a lot of plants in there. So, when you try to put that on a larger scale, I think it's gonna take quite a bit of the plants to be able to make a significant difference. But they're continuing to collaborate and work on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep that energy going.
Yeah. Sleep deprivation. Everybody should have, uh, the financial statements for Clinton City Schools, uh, General Purpose Fund, Federal Projects Fund, and the Cafeteria Fund. And just my recommendation that you accept those, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
You also should have a budget amendment, number four, a memo from me describing the highlights of that budget amendment. Uh, we've got a eleven thousand dollars, uh, increase in appropriations for the General Projects Fund, eighty-five thousand dollar increase in fund balance, which is mainly due to receiving the liquor-by-the-drink lump sum payment, uh, that has been finally settled, and a slight increase in some other revenue accounts. Uh, there's a budget amendment recommended for the Federal Projects Fund that reclassifies to rec, to reflect actual purchases that were required for that grant, um, but no increase in expenditures on the federal project side. So, I'd recommend that you approve, uh, budget amendment number four.
Do you hear a motion for approval, uh, of budget amendment number four?
So, move second.
Have a motion second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McFry.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stamey. Councilman Hataker. Councilman Farrar.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes. Budget amendment number four passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any questions for Scott, by the way? Thank you. Clinton Regional Planning Commission Report, Councilman Gann.
The Clinton Regional Planning Commission met on June the tenth. Uh, deferred business, we're still waiting on a, uh, recommendation from the Historical Commission regarding, uh, request by Alex McGrue and Dewan Brewer requesting rezoning, so we took no action on that. Applicant Raymond McDonald requesting final plat review for property located at Harbor Drive and Indian Ridge Lane. This was a minor plat revision, no, uh, nothing other than changing some property lines, and that was approved. Also, the, uh, Board of Zoning and Appeals met that night. Applicant Thomas R. Hicks Construction requesting reduction of distance between structures from twenty feet to ten feet located at Frank Price Boulevard. Uh, this property is zoned R-three. This is the development behind the Walgreens up, uh, Frank Price Boulevard. The original plan on this, this is a, uh, public utility district, P.U.D., and originally, this was a seventy-one unit, uh, condominium, uh, townhouse, and they have changed. The developer has decided that, uh, they wanted to go to fifty-one, uh, basically fifty-one residences, and that would require, uh, more space. And some of the units, not all, would, would need ten-foot clearance between structures rather than the, uh, normal zoning of twenty feet. And that was approved by the Board of Zoning and Appeals. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Larry?
Might also mention, uh, while I'm at it, uh, Green McAdoo, and I don't know if Roger has anything on this. I was unable to attend. But Green McAdoo did get a visit from Ashley, the, uh, state chairman of the museum. And, uh, I, everything I've heard, she's exceptionally happy about the way things are going and, uh, very happy about, uh, including Green McAdoo into the state museum system.
Good, good. I had a question about the, um, rezoning, the historic downtown. Has there been any discussion about some of the buildings that we need to bring into it, like the, the Depot?
That will be part, I would say, of the Historical Planning Commission.
Yeah, we did some research at Depot, and, uh.
Former Mayor Kathy Brown, I think it was during her timeframe that it was put in.
Okay, so it is part of it?
Yes.
Is that, is that Clinton Baptist Association, was that part of it initially?
I think it is.
It should be, if it's in between.
And that he actually goes up and catches the old post office, Samuel Franklin Building.
So, the buildings across the street from the Depot, the, the Old Legends Building, that was a church, and that real small building on the corner of Cullum and Market Street, is that part of?
Right now, it's my understanding that's part of it.
No, the one right next, uh, across from Clinton Baptist Association.
That's Dr. Rainey's former office.
Oh, I thought it was down there on the, the walk.
Both.
Both of them were? Okay. All right. And, um, one more, the, the Hicks Christie's Development, does she give you any timeframe when, when she plans on starting that?
I would say it's imminent at any point.
Good.
I've got a question that, that Laura, thinking about it. Those houses being built so close, that could be, is that a fire issue? I mean, you know, this house catches on fire, and it's ten feet to this house. I mean, I guess you guys are consulted in on that, or how's that, or are you, or?
I knew.
I mean, you hope a fire never happens, but, I mean, one structure.
We have a situation I've dealt with.
Oh, do you? That close, residences?
Licking Market Street. And a lot of that has to do with the fact it's P.U.D.
Okay.
Thanks, Larry. General Government Report, Mr. Houck?
What about C.U.B.?
C.U.B.
Oh, C.U.B., I'm sorry. I already checked that off. Well, Larry messed me up because he went right to Green McAdoo and skipped.
I just, I just.
Not my fault.
Accept responsibility.
Utility Board Report.
Yeah, just, uh, a couple of things. Um, Bull Run Steam Plant, uh, we met.
Uh, the C.U.B. was asked to attend a government forum, public forum. Um, several of us from city council were present, as were C.U.B. members. Uh, I'm excited about the future of what's gonna happen at, uh, the Bull Run Steam Plant. And a big part of that is, I believe, some of the leadership of C.U.B. and some of the, the, um, the ability to, to bring the, the right leadership in, to, to push the, the vision for what can happen there with Scott and with, um, and with Roger involved and with the C.D.A. Board. I mean, it's just, I was a little, uh, worried about what was gonna happen shutting that plant down, but, um, I have a renewed enthusiasm that a lot of good things can happen for infrastructure, um, for industrial development. So, I, I, C.U.B. is gonna be a, a partner in, in the future for what will happen to that plant. Uh, water rates are going to be adjusted to address, um, a second year. We're, we're hitting a shortfall in some of our numbers. So, we're gonna see a small adjustment to the water rates. We don't really have much of a, of a choice because pursuant to some of the state regs, um, they sort of handcuffed us. Uh, but even with the, the rate adjustments, we're gonna be well below, um, any other utility in our area. Excuse me. Finally, our fliz, flizer technology saved our C.U.B. system over a million dollars. Finally, our Fliz, Flizzer technology saved our CUB system over a million dollars this past fiscal year. So, I think that's a tribute to Ernie and Greg and those guys over there with the Flizzer. And Councilman McBride could probably wax poetically about the Flizzer technology because he's. Any other questions?
I had one, the, you know, we made some, CUB made some changes with their, to be more developer-friendly.
Correct.
Has there been any communication how we're going to communicate that to our developers?
Yes, thank you.
And we're going to package it some way?
So, we had a, we had a coffee chamber event and there's going to be another event specific to residential developers. We're going to invite our members and friends of the press and, and get that word out there. The, the policies are, I think, very good policies. And I, and again, I have to give credit where credit's due. Our general manager's done a good job of crafting those policies to meet the initiative of what we're trying to accomplish. We want CUB to be an organization that's easy to work with. And we heard just too much from our residential developers that we were not easy to work with. So, I think as well as policy change, it's just a general attitude of how we can be friendly and courteous with our developers or friends in that, in that community, in that space. And, you know, I like to have an attitude of how can we get to, to yes? You know, can you do this? Oftentimes, that, that's a yes or no question, but when, when it's debatable, you know, there's certain minds that, that get to no. No, we can't. And, and it's not my job. And I, I think we're in the process of changing attitudes that I'm not sure, let's see how we can, if we can. And I think that's important. I mean, that's not necessarily a policy change, but that's an attitude change. And, and we are working really hard, we've got great people at CUB. Those of you that have, have had the privilege to be on the board or work with them, then you know the quality of a utility district that we have. And we, we are a superior utility, but we want to be a great one, right? We want to be the best we can be, and you always can be better. And I think that customer service, as it relates, not to somebody walking up to the, to the window to pay a bill, I'm talking about in relation to developers. And I, and I think that that's been addressed and I'm getting some feedback that people are, are very happy with the direction of CUB and how they're handling new developers. And I'm encouraged by that. And I think together, we're going to do a lot of great things. CUB wants to work with the city, the CUB wants to work with, with our community partners, our stakeholders, and CUB wants to work with our developers.
So, outside of the, the chamber.
There's going to be, there's going to be a, a process where we're going to.
What would be nice, well, what would be nice would be, number one, have something digitally that we, we can put it on the Chambers website, the city website, CUB's website.
Right.
And even a pamphlet, the, the bill would actually hand it to someone.
It's not going to be a light that we hide under the bushel. And so, like I've talked to, I've been speaking with, with Crystal from the Clinton Courier and, and I promised her that we're going to work with, with the Courier to get a story out. They've been following, the Courier's been following diligently this issue. And I've asked, you know, let us get it finalized before we, we, we go to press with that. But we certainly want to publicize what we're doing. And speaking with other developers, they're encouraging us to publicize what we're doing because it's just a, it's a good, responsible initiative to encourage growth. And we're going to closely monitor how this goes and how this affects, you know, the rate payer. Because we're also very conscientious of wanting to protect the rate payer, not subsidizing development at the expense of the rate payer. But how do we encourage growth? Because we need rooftops. Rooftops will truly grow, you know, our retail and the type of retail that we all like to see.
Good. Any other questions for Zach?
Thanks, Zach. Appreciate it.
And just, just briefly, I just wanted to say, I know you've got a board appointment coming up. I am very enthusiastic about the current board as we have it. You know, I think that the board has a lot of independent thinkers. We don't always agree, but we respect one another, and that's the way I think a board should work. It's okay to have a certain amount of tension as long as it's productive, as long as it's civil, as long as it's encouraging discourse and debate. And I think that we currently have a board that's constructed, the other part to, to accomplish those tasks. CUB, it has taken me a couple of years to just even get my arms around how that place really works. And I think that, you know, it, for continuity, it, it's, it's helpful to have people serve maybe multiple terms so they can really understand. It's just my thoughts, Mayor, and I just wanted to share it with you.
Thank you. General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Could I have one more question?
Yeah.
Does the board already okay the budget for this fiscal year?
They have. I, I believe so.
Okay.
I'm trying to think, I'm on a couple of different boards that are approving budgets this time of year.
So, raises and everything passed on through?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
General Government Report, Mr. Houck.
Thank you, Mayor. The city offices and departments will be closed on Thursday, July the 4th, and Friday, July the 5th, in observance of Independence Holiday. The 130th Annual Anderson County Fair will be held at the fairgrounds, J.C. Park area, Monday, July the 15th through July the 20th. The City of Clinton, 4th of July, activity and fireworks will take place at Lakefront Park and will begin at 5:00 PM. And I'm going to defer to Mr. Brown and let him give the details of it.
Most everything's the same. Backyard bouncers, laser tag, the game truck, a few things that are different. We got different, a lot of music this year, it's Randy Woody and Southbound. Got a bunch of different food vendors, so I've kind of went out and tried to get a whole bunch of different stuff. In the past couple of years, we've tried to just limit to a certain few. I'm, I'm not doing it that way this year, I'm getting a bunch of different ones. So, Bananigans, Coldwater Farms, Dave's Dog House, Holy Smoke and Barbecue, Mom and Pa's Old Time Treats, and Sweet Pea Snow Cones. And then I had somebody else call me yesterday. A, a bite of the Big Apple, it's Italian ice, so it's something, all of them are kind of different stuff and I don't want people to overlap and do different things. Should have some antique cars, everything is on, fireworks are at 10. Couple little things that are different, the bridge has caused some problems on parking. Probably, or we are, making Lakefront, just handicap parking only. Chief Becker and the police department are going to help with some crosswalks, some different places for people to get down to Lakefront. But everything will be at Lakefront Park. Everything will be the same on that side of stuff.
So, JB, when the, you know, if you're parking on Riverside, is there any way you can go under the bridge to Lakefront, or is that going to be blocked off?
It'll be blocked off, there'll be an officer down there.
We need to make sure that's.
Yeah. And then my, my guys will probably be in the park trying to make sure people don't.
Right.
The construction zone will be off limits. I've said this to a couple of different people I've talked to, we've got great sponsors, we've got everything taken care of. So, everything is free, kids come down, parents come down, bring a chair, blanket.
Food's not free, is it?
Food's not free.
All right.
We've, we've done really good on raising money this year, so everything's good.
Thanks, JB. Appreciate it.
Thank you, JB. The Eagle Bend Road repairs, we have resumed work back on it. We're estimating, if we don't run into any other issues, probably 30 to 60 days of having that completed. But that's going to depend on weather. Last week, the weather ain't been too good, so Dwayne, he was going to stay and work late today. The shower came up at 4:30, so we'll probably do some overtime when we do get pretty weather to try to get that moving forward.
Roger, I have a question about that, Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
What's the viability of shutting that road down?
Probably not, and the reason being, it's the only, it's a secondary access into the industrial park. I know we had a wreck out there today that we had to shut the road down for a while. So, the problem is, if you have something even minor as a wreck, you have to shut that road down. There's no way for people to get in and out of the industrial park. God forbid, if we ever had something major and had to shut it down, we really would be in, in.
Could you, could you put?
A real life thing that happened today during the wreck, my wife was coming home, came up our driveway, passed three cars leaving our driveway. Because I guess they thought they could come up there and find a way out. They flagged my wife down, told her she couldn't go that way. One lady did. I mean, she's been nice. And my wife says, well, I live up there. She said, oh, so I mean, it's, there's been two wrecks. There was one not long ago in front of Gary's Body Shop. I don't know what happened there, but there was actually a car over on a railroad track. So, it was a, a hard hit and it was shut down. And so, you had everybody, I actually was going through at lunch, I got through, but then you had everybody from lunch wanting to go out from Tecmo and Modine and all those others, but it was, it was shut down.
And, and I, I'm aware that there's lots of people who live on that other side of where that, that construction is, is taking place and that may be inconvenient to them. But for those of us, me included, and, you know, I live on Eagle Bend, 601 Eagle Bend Drive, Zach Farah. It's been a blessing of, of, you know, there's been more foot traffic. And the traffic that I'm concerned about is not the local traffic. It turns into the Indianapolis Speedway when, when those guys go, go to work in the mornings and, and in the afternoons. And I know there's some people in the audience from Eagle Bend that can testify to that. I don't know, I know every city struggles with that. Knoxville can, is, is, struggles at Fourth and Gil with, and they put up speed bumps and they're still having problems and complaints about speed. I just want to know the viability of it, and it's been answered and I do, I know other people.
I live on the other side, so I want it open.
Yeah, I understand that.
Okay.
Don't, don't forget the Anderson County Fair.
I said that.
You did.
Yeah.
Twenty days. Twenty, it's twenty days?
Okay. Finance, I'm going to defer to Gail, I'm with Skip Lamar, we can come back to it.
You got your sales tax report, the city was up again, a little over 5% and countywide was up a little over 12%. So, sales tax continues to look really good, both for the countywide as well as for the city. Our revenue's looking really good. If you look, we're at 93.8%, whereas our percentage for months to date is just a little over 91. And keep in mind that we're two months behind on local option sales tax and one month behind on state shared. So, we're going to close out the year very good with our revenue projections. Property tax, we've collected, we're like 97, almost 98% of our aggregate, and that's very good for us. And that's a little above what we did last year, so we're doing very good on collecting as a total. We're already above our revenue projection or our budgeted projection, but we're even really good on our aggregate. So, we're looking good there. And if you look at, we've got a deficit a little over 572,000. But keep in mind that we spent over 1.4 million on capital projects this year. So, you look overall, it's a combination of our revenue had, had done very well and the departments have kept their expenditures well within budget this year, too.
Any questions for Gail?
I brought this up last month, I'll refer you to this, delinquent property tax.
Roger's got some information on that.
Contact this month about that?
Talked to the city attorney last week, he is in the process of preparing, and me and Gail's actually going to meet with him Thursday. Thursday to look over at a 2011 through 2015 tax sale. He said he's got around probably 20 properties that could go into auction. He said he hoped to have it early, if I'm, be ready to have it. So, we'll meet with him, actually look at the properties. Some of them, you know, you come to the case, some of them, if they're not desirable properties, you take them to the tax sale, they don't sell, then they become our property, it could be liable to be on us, so we want to look and make sure what we take.
So, most of those that we would have a tax sale on, would, would the county, would that pretty much mirror the county? Or is some people pay their county and not pay the city?
A lot of times, that's, that's why we wanted to do this, people will keep their county taxes paid up because, because the cities never did a tax sale. The county does, well, I think they're doing one sometime this summer. People that know how to work the system will pay their county taxes, which is considerably higher than the cities, but won't pay their cities. You know, we looked at it six weeks ago and it was amazing, so a lot had paid.
So, just out of curiosity, what qualifies to be a delinquent tax? There's so many years, I guess?
Well, actually Gina could probably tell you, the date's quicker and easier than I can, but we hold them for so long. So, your 2018's become delinquent, the next year, we hold them, we turn them over to the clerk and master, then they sit at the clerk and master. So, it takes, I guess, on average, three years before we would ever consider a tax sale.
But we've never done one, but we're going to start, we're going to get on a routine, though. And I, we talked about this, is it true, like in Knoxville, do we not, have I not seen people who've not paid their taxes? Have I not seen that advertised in the paper?
Well, there's a, there's a requirement to notify, so.
So, you notify that person in writing by letter?
And then if you can't do notification, you, you have to at least post it, so it's a combination. So, that's what Phil has been in the process somewhat of doing now, is tracking down. Most of the time, our properties are captured through the trustee's sale because they owe both county.
They owe both county and city.
And cities. So, when they go to, go to auction at the county, they call, get the amount from the city, and that becomes their base bid.
Would it not be, is, would it be beneficial, or can you, this list of 20 properties or whatever, can you list that in the Courier? That those folks are delinquent and, and mean peer pressure and pay your taxes?
That will be part of Phil's.
That'll be part of the next step?
Yes.
But, but if they're notified by mail, they wouldn't be in the paper, would they?
You can do it both ways.
But I think the ones we sell, we have to, prior to the auction.
If we, if you get to that point, there's notification.
All right, thank you all.
So, thank you all.
One other note on the finance, our fiscal audit did start today, and we've got actually three new auditors coming in. So, that process is beginning. The fire department, our current three frontline rescue pumpers are our 2007 models. NFPA standards recommend they be replaced no later than 12 to 15 years of service. We have put together a replacement plan to meet our upcoming needs to replace these trucks. Chief Brummett, Chief Little, and I have been working with EBS and Pierce Manufacturing to develop this five-year plan. They have agreed to lock today's price in on truck number one for the purchase of the next two trucks and possibly a mini pumper along with the purchase of a rescue boat. The total savings of this plan could possibly exceed $325,000 over the next five years. Therefore, I recommend the purchase of a rescue boat at a cost of $34,800 and the rescue pumper not to exceed $500,000. We will not take possession of the truck probably for 10 to 12 months, so we don't have to pay for it till then also. This money will come out of the fire department's capital outlay fund. One thing, one example on this, some of the tariffs that are supposed to hit, they have priced this, this truck today, and it's just a rough price, that's why we're saying not to exceed $500,000 because it has to be detailed, we spec'd out. This truck, we got it today, the one we spec'd down online was $498, that truck will go up to $576,000 August the 1st. So, we wait six weeks, it's going to jump. We know annually, they have anywhere from 3% to 5% increase every July. So, when you add those factors in over a five-year period, we paid $498 this month for a truck, that same truck would be roughly $673 on an estimate, that could vary some, that, that will up that much. Questions?
We're talking about buying a boat and a truck now, but the problem is to buy two trucks later.
Within, within five, within five years.
Yes, I read, if we back out of it, though, there's no penalties. Now, yes and no, the boat now, the truck, we'd have to approve it to the PO, but we don't pay for it, it could be as late as next July. Before we perfectly, it takes me 10, 12.
But we have to lock in.
Eight to 10 months to build it, yes, that would lock us in.
So, the, the idea is, is to purchase a truck and actually say we're purchasing the truck in 2019, but we would not take delivery until 2020.
20, or payment.
Or payment or whatever. And then the second truck would happen, we would purch, we would agree to purchase it in 21, but not take delivery until 22. Do the same thing in 23 and take the delivery in 24.
I'm pretty much guessing this, this has to be done, our, we have one backup truck that's a 93? 94 model, that's the only backup we have, these trucks, actually, they've been in service since 2007, so.
And they were all bought at the same time.
And they were all bought at the same time, then, that's why we're trying to stagger them so we don't have a huge cost over the next council, next city.
Three, maybe it's scattered on more than a couple of years apart.
Like, probably not, because I mean, it would take the, the, when we buy in 2023, we probably wouldn't take, probably 2024 before we get it. So, you're looking 16, 17 years of service on that.
The 12-year-old today, and then you. The twelve years old today and then you add six more years to that. So by the time it's replaced, it's an eighteen or nineteen-year-old truck.
Right, which is at the very limits.
The, the old, once we do this process, we're going to move the old trucks when they become obsolete or not, not the right word.
Probably, I mean, we would keep them as some backups, few of them as backups and we would probably, you know, surplus a few of them too. And the mini pumper we talked about, that's an option that if, if our growth at the interstate picks up and we need to do something immediately before we go to fire hall up there, it would be an option.
And I asked you earlier today, I called you about the boat. Could you talk about that and kind of, I mean, my question was is, you know, do we really need the boat and is that something we need? And then your answer, I mean, I'd like for the public to hear that.
And, and you know, same as a fire truck, the rescue boat is something hope you never need, but there have been times we need it. We don't have one. We, we either have to rely on the rescue squad, who's a volunteer agency, sometimes they're there, sometimes they're not. So kind of like when we did the fire truck, we, we relied on a bridge for many years because ours was too small and not sufficient. So that's why we want to purchase one, so we, we don't have to rely on another agency. But there has been half a dozen incidents over the last four or five years that we could have used one. Uh, we had a possible jumper on the bridge. We all went down there. We, we didn't have boat can get the rescue squad. Uh, some of the firemen put in one of the, one of the John boats out of the boathouse that didn't have a motor on it, so they're trying to push it with oars. We, two weeks ago, we had one of the bad storms come through. One of the tugboats down here, boats that they're using to build the bridge got loose. We had no way of, of getting it. It folded a mile and a half down and luckily just didn't run into anybody's dock. Trying to think. We've had four or five things. We had about a year ago in one of the council meetings that we had the coach and two, two teenagers flip their skull. And, um, at that time, we did have to rely on the rescue squad and it wasn't the best of case. So that's why we want something that, that our guys can train on. We've got, we've got some, I don't know how many, firemen that are, have went through the Swift Water Rescue. And actually, we just hired a police officer away from Knox County Friday. He'll start the later in July. He's a certified rescue diver. So we'll have some people on staff.
I'd imagine that thirty-four, that thirty-four A price tag, I mean, when you buy something like that, you have to equip it. And the equipment on that is probably a, a lot of, of that dollar amount.
I mean, it comes, it comes with the lights. It comes with a set of lights all the way around it. I'll say that, two in the front, two in the back, two on each side that will illuminate the water at night. So if you can see, it has a, I guess a basket or a cage on the front of it that the fireman can actually flip down and, and the police will be using this boat some too. They can flip this down and actually scoop somebody up in it. Uh, you know, it's another need. We always during the Fourth of July fireworks, we have to keep an area in front of, uh, where we shoot them free, if any boats. So we have to hopefully rely on getting the rescue squad, um, to put in and help us there. Where next year, you know, we'll have a police officer and a fireman in, in our own boat to patrol in that area.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mayor. Uh, I'd called Roger today and asked him about the boat because I'd never heard of a situation where we needed a boat, but your explanation was, was excellent on that. I would be totally for that. Does it have sonar on it in case somebody had drowned, I guess?
It has.
It has a certain type, but it's not, you know, like you see, they have, they submerge it in water and actually see things like that. But we, we have a, it has a certain type that will do what we need to do.
What you need to do. I'd be totally for that. And of course, fire trucks, what would be the, the boundaries of the template set for the fire hall up at the interstate? What are we actually waiting for?
No, waiting on, you know, further development rooftops and we've got the possibility of that happening real soon. More retail, we've got the possibility of that happening real soon. So once, once it starts growing, that, that we would have to start covering that area. Now, you know, your big thing with that is you have to hire, that's your biggest expense is hiring employees, hiring firemen to work it.
Do you have a deal with SL as far as property?
Yes.
As far as you know?
Yeah, they donated two acres, I think, back to us for the fire hall.
Good.
Roger, conversations earlier, this was, we're going to try to pay for this as we go. This is not financing these things.
We, we, our current plan is right now to pay for the first one cash. Hopefully, and I don't know what the county's doing, if they keep their rotation in to give each community money to buy a fire truck, hopefully, we would probably, the last time I talked to the county mayor, they were talking about doing it every other year. So that would put us at year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to use the county money. And we also will continue applying for federal, federal grants. So, you know, in a perfect world, we'd buy this one, get a grant for the next one, let the county pay for the next one. But if not, worst case world, we are planning, we will start a, um, a reserve fund just for the fire truck and start putting money in it each year, as we've been doing for paving and other, other equipment and pay cash for them.
Thank you. Back to the boat real quick. I'm, I would assume that there's going to be people that's going to be certified to operate the boat?
I hope so, yes.
Okay. I want to go around the pen at one o'clock in the morning and see the lights going down the river. Now, I just want to make sure because not everybody, you have to be trained, you have to know what you're doing to train the boat. I just want to make sure that there's a process there.
We would love to have a place, get a place to keep it at lakefront because that's sensitive located with all the bridge construction. We can't do that right now, so for, for the duration of the bridge construction, we'll keep it at Station One. I guess easily could put in at veterans' bridges need be.
Would anybody like to make a motion on this?
So moved.
Having a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Just real quick.
And this is just for the boat or we did a boat-truck together?
Boat, boat together, right?
That's fine. I don't care.
Yeah.
My motion is for all together.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we're open to this discussion. So, got to replace fire truck, right?
Fire trucks go bad, we got to get them replaced. So this is the best fiscal responsible plan that we have, it sounds like. That to address the, the, a real need to provide our citizens fire protection, right? And I think one of, two things I take real serious is fire and police. And it sounds like, and I just, yes or no, this is a good plan to address it in, in the most fiscally responsible manner?
Yes.
That's, that's my belief as well. And I believe we do need a boat. You know, it's, it's sort of like a gun. You don't need it till you need it. And, um, and I think with that much waterfront and with, uh, with the incidents that we've heard documented, I don't think it's irresponsible for this, for us as a city of our size and with the fact that we have this wonderful, beautiful river running through our town, that very soon may have lots of people navigating it, I think it's a need.
I met with the Aspire Foundation today and it, it is one thing, they're really pushing and they've asked TBA for a canoe kayak access. And what they're, what they're hoping is that you could put in on that side of South Clinton. It's a two-mile float to Lakefront Park and they could pick you up and take you back to your vehicle. So that's, and that's another reason that we're trying to plan for down the road a year or two.
Well, again, you know, I think it's worth noting that this isn't going to, we don't have to raise taxes, we don't have to borrow money. This is money that we have saved, planned for these type of capital outlay expenditures.
Yeah, we, and we've actually been working on this plan for probably over a year. I mean, we knew it was coming, so when we did the ladder truck, we knew, and once we got that, we would need to come up with a solution.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Works, the annual materials contract renewed. According to the Article Five, Section Eight of the City of Clinton Charter, I would request authorization to renew the annual contracts for materials and service for a period of July one, two thousand nineteen through June thirty, twenty twenty. A Rogers Group Incorporated Asphalt Stone, Duracap Asphalt, APAC Atlantic Incorporated, Harris Construction Company Concrete, Superior Drainage, Culverts, Volunteer Highway Supply Pavement Markings.
Here, motion. Have a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The LPRF Grant, South Clinton Park Inclusive Playground Project. After multiple delay, delays in the TDEC review and approval process for the current LPRF grant program, we have finally received authorization to proceed. With this approval in place, we need to move forward with the playground equipment purchase, surfacing and playground equipment installation. The playground equipment and surfacing will be purchased through the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative and the playground equipment installation will be solicited through our sealed bid process. We therefore would recommend to proceed with the expenditures for this project at a total amount not to exceed two hundred and thirty thousand dollars based on the method described. I just want to remind you, we did get a stake for the two thirty, we got a state grant, which will pay for a hundred and fifteen of that two thirty. The city has put seventy-five thousand into the project, this part of the project. And then the rest of the, the local match is either in kind or raised money. Some of it's in kind gravel from Rogers Group. So really out of that two thirty, right now today, there's only seventy-five thousand being paid by the city.
Here, motion for approval? Motion, second. Any further discussion? Roger, what's the, um, what's the target completion date on this now?
We, we hope to have it done by the end of August.
She's, it's about six weeks delivery on the equipment.
I mean, it's, it's just been, the TDEC has changed, TDEC Recreation Services has changed their procedures. Everything's online this year. It's new to them. It's definitely new to us. I've done several of these grants over the year where usually you'd go to a workshop, you announce the grant, they give you a contract, you're ready to go. Well, this, this grant got awarded last October. We have really pushed them to get moving with it. We're the only contract that has been released so far statewide. And you got to have that contract before you can do anything.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I did skip one. In the fire department, we have removed the following vehicle from services and recommend, recommend that it be declared surplus and placed on GovDeals website for disposal. Two thousand eight Crown Victoria with a hundred and, one hundred thirty-nine thousand four hundred miles.
Here, motion for approval?
So moved.
Having a motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any other questions for Roger? You had one more, I don't know, didn't we?
Uh, one more was just the Lamar. I mean, either bring it up now or, um, when we talk about the budget.
But you want to talk about your recommendation?
Well, I think council would have either three choices, either leave it like it is, drop it, or drop the one billboard. It's ten thousand dollars. I think there's really three options on the table for council and, um...
Let me ask. Go ahead.
My concern, you know, I don't have a concern, I don't have a problem with the billboards, uh, being general. I can't think of another, and again, if one area of Clinton does well, the, all the areas do well. We're in this together. Uh, our biggest competition as retailers is online shopping. It's not each other. Uh, because people love the Amazon boxes coming to their house and that, that hurts local business. I'm, I'm kind of the one who kind of brought this up at the beginning, but my, my goal would be on this, or my thoughts is, if Tanner Place up here at Walmart, if five or six or eight or ten of those businesses got together and wanted to go do a billboard advertising schematic or a plan and they came to the City of Clinton and said, well, you fund seventy-five percent of it, we'll fund, we, we eight businesses will do the other twenty-five. That's the struggle I have. I think the billboards are fine, uh, but I don't think it's fair for the businesses downtown to pay for billboards of general nature. So my, my thoughts is, is to do two billboards. Uh, do two billboards that are general in term, that talk about Clinton as a whole. But that the merchants downtown don't pay any of it, that city pay all of it. If I'm not mistaken, in the budget, there's fourteen thousand dollars in that lineup. If I found the right lineup. The Raccoon, uh, let me get my numbers here together. The Raccoon Valley billboard was sixty-six eighteen and, uh, the one twenty-nine billboard was thirty-five seventy.
Correct.
Uh, my, my, if you want to get something started, my proposal would be to take those two billboards, keep those two billboards, talk to them about the vegetation that's around those billboards before we made a commitment, that we need them to make a commitment. And that we come up with something that talks about the City of Clinton as a whole. All the shopping, all the dining, the riverfront, whatever you want to do. And the merchants pay nothing. That the city pick up one hundred percent of the tab, but it would be a more general type billboard, advertising shopping. And all those.
And we could do that. I mean, we quickly, I mean, we just had really four weeks to have them come up with a plan and our, um, Lamar representative was out of town last week with her son, baseball nurse. We only really had a couple of weeks to work on it. You know, they presented us a general one. Me, Gail, some of us looked at it and it was, it was real general. So I mean, it would, it would, hey, you know, could probably spend more time on it. The current one we have, just so you'll know, it says historic downtown, it's got Clinton in big letters, exit one twenty-two, over twenty antique and specialty shops and dining. And in the corner, it's got a little cell tag that says top ten antique in town in USA. So that's, that's the one we have now. And I think we just redid it a couple of years ago.
Mayor, may I? Um, I understand what Councilman McBride's saying. What he's talking about is, 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 uh, his understanding and position of fairness and equity and trying to treat people fairly and treat businesses fairly. I think it's a very honorable sentiment. I think it comes from, from a very honorable place. But I, I'm convinced that the three signs are, are appropriate. I think that the benefit of the signs is it helps drive tax revenue for our city, which benefits our city schools, our fire, our police and other city businesses. I think that it's, cities downtown is critical to the, the overall viability of the town. And I, um, I would make a motion, uh, to, to keep it as it is, all three signs. And then maybe next year we can revisit it and look at it a little bit, a little bit closer. It feels like it's a, a lot of trying to, you know, what's Lamar going to do, what's Lamar not going to do? We're trying to figure out redesign. So in the interest of that, I would just, I make a motion to leave it as it is and I'll, if it's seconded, I'd call a question.
Have a motion to hear second?
Sir.
A motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I had, uh, since the last meeting, I've had several merchants, uh, contact me and they were more along, um, Councilman McBride's thinking that, uh, something more generic for the whole city versus their tax dollars going to benefit one entity. So that's just my two cents. They're not here, they didn't want to be controversial or, you know, but, uh, being more fair to the whole city versus one group.
One thing I did think of when Vice Mayor said that, uh, we did have these boards reskinned, I want to think a couple of years ago, and usually the lifespan are three to four. It would be an additional cost if we had them reskinned, reskinned this year. Uh, so, and this would probably be the last year of these that we would have to do. I mean, they start fading and just start looking bad. So, you know, to, to possibly do that, to, and then we'll know next year that we need to work on it much earlier. It could be a possible solution because you're probably talking to do two new boards. I don't remember the cost, thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, have them skinned additionally?
At least.
At least that much.
And, and I need to disclose, I think, for, for conflict of interest purposes, my wife and my wife's family has a business on Market Street. I live with her and I go home to her and so I think that that constitutes a conflict of interest. I want to fully disclose that. I, and so I, I don't think I have to recuse myself from a vote. Okay. But I, I wouldn't, I want to just keep all that out and in the open.
I think basically on what we've heard here, I, I think, uh, what I've heard tonight is, the feeling is the, that the billboard right at the one twenty-two exit is the most valuable of the three. And what we're talking about is possibly eliminating that.
Well, let me, let me ask that. I asked earlier on, so for the votes antiquers, if you might be saying that, I don't know why. But business owners on Market Street, how many would like to keep it the same? Raise your hand. And how many would like to keep it as for two, as two, two billboards? Okay. I think that answers your question, Mayor.
All right, and I, I agree with Councilman Farrar, exactly. I think, uh, I think we've got a lot of things here kind of bubbling in the pot. You know, particularly with replacing skins and replacing, you know, looking at things. I don't think years putting it on hold would, would hurt us at all. So I think probably we just need to stick with what we've got.
Well, I've just been going back to the schools. I mean, we have a lot of great things going on. Blaze Program and, and just, you know, it's just, it's really, a, a really good feeling, a lot of good momentum. And I think the same thing's happening downtown. And so my thing is, no, let's don't mess with that. Let's see, let's, let's keep, let's keep running with it. And there, you know, down the road, if there's changes that we mutually want to do, then, then let's take a look at it. But, but I don't want to change that. And, and I respect what Jim's saying too. I understand what you're saying. I just, I just have a different perspective on it. Because, you know, like someone said, I, I don't know which one, which one said it, but you know, I remember the eighties down there. It wasn't good and I don't want to go back there. So let's just keep it going. I think we, I think we're doing a lot of positive things. I, I wasn't able to make it Friday night, but Roger said it was fantastic. So, and things, you, you get a good, good experience, they want to come back and they, they tell people to come down there. And I think that's what's happening. So I want to support that.
One thing I might add, I think Councilman Stamey was talking. One thing I'm, I'm add, I think Councilman Stany was talking about this. You know, I don't know what role it's gonna play, you know, the new state law goes into effect about handheld devices. Uh, so a lot of people are gonna look and say, okay, it's at Clinton, it's at one twenty-two. And they may be looking anything, but all of a sudden that billboard slaps them in the face and it says, hey, this is where we've gotta turn right here. And I think, I think that's beneficial.
Any further discussion?
Well, I wanna make sure, Roger, is, is, is my disclosure of any potential conflict, is that okay? Do I need to rescind my motion, redo the motion?
No.
Okay, just, I wanna, thank you.
Anything else?
But it's a caution.
So yes would be leave it as it is, no, do not leave it as it is. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
No.
Councilman Harrell?
No.
Councilman Stany?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Fair?
Yes.
And Mayor Burton?
Yes. Motion passes. Don't I have one? Any other questions for Roger?
I've got one, uh, and I don't know if it's now or later, we can probably address it now. Magnet Mills?
Yes.
I know that some things are going on over there, the slum ordinance and tearing down. What about the vegetation that continues to grow of the, of the other part? Is that, will that be addressed, can that be addressed?
It is now. Um, Jason Stokes has, has been kinda keeping an eye on them. I thought, I thought they actually had moved their track hole away, it's actually around the back.
Right.
Uh, Chief Brumman issued them a burn permit just a couple of weeks ago. And what their plan is, is to clear off all the vegetation on it.
Okay.
We'll let them burn it in small piles and get rid of it. Uh, we did receive our.
Third or fourth?
Payment last week of twenty thousand dollars. And that's on the.
Is that the?
Young people.
Is that the last one?
No, there still is twenty-one thousand more. They paid ninety thousand roughly, probably, ninety-one thousand.
Close to that.
So even after they do this vegetation, even after it's cleaned off, they do the burn permit, they do all that, even though there's slum ordinance and all this other stuff, they're still required to keep that clean, right?
Correct.
And we can enforce that?
Yes.
And we will enforce that because, I mean, that vegetation, once it's cleaned off, it's, what, end of June? Come, I don't know, what, August, September?
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna be right back there again. So, I mean.
Right.
But come August or September, we can address it again, right?
Right. And that's kinda, since we got John Householder on, on board six weeks ago, I guess, uh, John is pretty much handling the, the building aspect, approving plans and that stuff. And Jason Stokes is doing code enforcement. Now, that's about ninety-ten for both of them, if one of them's out.
Right.
The other can pick up. So, so really, you know, for the first time in a while, we've got a full-time guy just doing codes.
Okay.
I mean, and, and to echo Councilman McBride sentiments, be, if they're in violation, um, I expect them to be cited.
But that's true for everything, for everyone.
For everyone or everybody, correct. But particularly something right in the middle of town, but I agree, yes.
You know, talking about codes, you know, we, we kinda gotten away from the top ten list and, and, you know, really uh addressing that. I, I really, and, and we got some new guys on, on there that to maybe, I really encourage, let's start that back up and, and Vaughn, you can help us with that if you don't mind and.
Anything else?
Yeah, while we're on old business, sometime ago, we made an allocation to the Community Action Commission.
He's trying to listen to me.
With the understanding that when that came about, that that would allow them to be taken over by Ethers. Uh, to my understanding, it's still the Community Action Commission. Where do we stand on that?
The last correspondent I had with them, you're correct, that the IRS had sent them a letter, them being Community Action, had sent them a letter and said they needed further review uh before they would decide if they would, I guess, dismiss the fines on them. And until that's done, Ether will not take them over. So it's.
So where's the money?
Well, we, once you all approved it, we, we wrote them a check and I think so didn't count.
What'd they done with that money?
Sent to the IRS.
Well, again, if it comes to that time, you know, the approval of that money was contingent upon Ether taking over. So we would strongly encourage that that would happen sooner than later.
Okay.
Um, one more thing too, just, I should ask you that, just between you and I, but I think it, it'd be good for everyone to, to know. What's the update on the applied technology that the school, because I don't, they, they've broken ground, haven't they?
I, I, I don't know. I know, you know, they had the ground, official groundbreaking in December, but they have not started on it. Um, so I don't know what.
Was it because of weather or, do we just inquire? I don't know if we have really a.
We can.
I talked with Gordon today and he said September is the start, start date.
Okay. Thank you.
Weather permitting.
Yes. Anything else? Thank you, Roger. Thank you, Gail, Department Heads, for all, all you do. You make the budget process much, much easier. Appreciate that. Um, under ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances, ordinance number six forty-three, this is the fiscal year two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen budget amendment. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Gail, this is the, I ask you this every year because I always get, this is when we kind of balance everything out.
Everything's gone during the year.
And it's good, so. And after this, next month, we'll do the second, everything will be closed.
Yes.
In, in that budget, okay, thank you. Um, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stany?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six forty-three passes on first reading. Second and final readings, ordinance number six forty-two. This is the passage for the fiscal year budget for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stany?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker, Councilman Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Ordinance number six forty-two passes on second and final reading. Under adoptions and resolutions, resolution number seven seventy-eight, this is appropriations to nonprofit organizations for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Do we hear, hear a motion for approval? Second. Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Roger, these are pretty much consistent as they were last year.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann?
Yes.
Councilman McBride?
Yes.
Councilman Harrell?
Yes.
Councilman Stany?
Yes.
Councilman Hatmaker? Councilman Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Burton?
Yes. Resolution number seven seventy-eight passes. Yeah, you voted to, I mean, you voted on that. Any, um, old business before us? Any new business?